Okay, let's call this meeting of the Westchester County Planning Board to order.
Welcome to the living room.
It's definitely cooler than it was in Playland. But outside is about the same. We have the town supervisor, Robert Reesling here, to give us a introduction. Once he gets his coffee.
Yeah, he's just getting his coffee.
If you don't mind, throw the microphone over in the corner.
Sure.
We're very formal.
Testing. Okay, I'll take the mic off.
The mic isn't for sound, it's for recording.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to Newcastle and the beautiful Coopla Building, the former headquarters of Reader's Digest. And this building is now mixed-use housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, and market-rate housing, all in one roof. Incredible example of adaptively reusing a building, obviously, and in my opinion, the way affordable housing should be integrated with workforce as well. And thank you, Norma, for all your help to make this happen, and Sabrina Charny-Hull, our Director of Planning, who has done an incredible job here in Newcastle. I'll tell you briefly, is this when you wanted me to talk about some of our little projects? Okay, well, we've had a very busy, I've been on the board supervisor for five years, we've been very busy. We've updated our comprehensive plan in 2017, won two awards, but who's counting? Thank in large part to Sabrina. And so that's in place now, and now we're starting to implement our comprehensive plan. Right here, you're in Chapka Crossing, which is the former headquarters of Reader's Digest. And this is becoming also a mixed-use, what we call traditional neighborhood design. Basically, we have housing in the Coopla Building, we're going to have 91 townhomes coming. We have 120,000 square feet of retail coming, anchored by Whole Foods and also Lifetime Fitness, and then another 40,000 square feet of retail to bring it to 120. And then we have, of course, the office buildings, which will still have about 500,000 square feet of rentable office space. So it's a great example of adaptively reuse. An office park that has been vacant for 15 years or something, and essentially, a small fraction of the tax revenue that the town has been receiving is now hopefully going to be restored back to prior levels.
Do you know where the major tenants are in the commercial space here?
Well, Whole Foods and Lifetime are certainly two major tenants, and then we have, as far as other signed leases, we have a Verizon Wireless coming, we have a Fidelity coming, we have, what else we got, the Chase Bank coming, there's going to be a coffee place coming, we don't know which one yet. There's going to be a Pet Value. I haven't named many traditional retailers yet, which is actually good. We're very concerned about the retail here competing with our downtown. And actually, what we were able to do with the zoning is we prevented personal use here. So essentially, all our dry cleaners, and we may have a dry cleaner here, but all our dry cleaners and our hair salons and nail salons and even our pharmacies, that's going to be downtown Chappaqua, and here, it's going to be none of those personal uses. So we try to, you know, we're concerned about competition. Really, quite honestly, all the tenants I've named so far, I'm very happy with because they're not going to compete with downtown. Personally, I couldn't care less if a bank competes with downtown or Fidelity competes with downtown. I'm more concerned about, you know, some of our small mom-and-pop retailers. What else? So we also revitalized our downtown Chappaqua. Basically, if you passed through there, you would have been on very bumpy roads. We've replaced our complete water system, Con Ed came and replaced our gas lines, which are doing all over the place, but we coordinated with our infrastructure project. We've replaced our sewer system, and right now, we're just finishing up with our storm drainage. And then we start to sidewalks all the streetscape improvements. We're going to have wider sidewalks, decorative lighting, more outdoor space to congregate. And, you know, listen, I was a vocal opponent of this project at one point, because I was very concerned, we initially were talking about having a lot of townhomes here. And it eventually was approved, but I said, listen, if we're going to do this, we've got to anchor up our downtown. And that's exactly what we're doing with our new streetscape downtown, a new infrastructure. And hopefully, with our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2017, we're going to encourage more housing in our downtown, we're going to make it more walkable. We have something we're trying to get, and you know, I know the county's been supportive of us, we're trying to do something what we call a chap line, which is basically a multi-use path that's actually connect this location, Chapka Crossing, to downtown Chappaqua that runs along the county trunk line, which the county has been receptive, we appreciate that. So now, right now, we're exploring, now putting together an RFP for a feasibility study. And so by making our downtown more walkable and more people living downtown, and we're inconsistent with our comp plan, more recreational activities in our downtown, we're trying to increase the vibrancy, which I know all towns need to do. And the last thing I'll mention, I know you're only, you know, short, you know, if, part of the reason why I was late was because, and I'm not even saying this for effect, was getting across the highway. I live, I happen to live on the other side of the highway. And, you know, we have a railroad track there, railroad crossing, and we have the sawmill. And now, they came in and did what's called preemption, where basically now, when a train comes, it's coordinated with the light, which actually makes sense, but it's causing a bit of a traffic nightmare for us, more so than it was before. And so getting across the highway is definitely taking a little longer than it used to. We need a bridge, and it's something that we're going to be pushing, we've been pushing for ever since the tragic accident in Valhalla, and we're going to continue to push for it. We have a busy highway over there, which is, we have a major train corridor, we're half a mile from the high scorches across the street from us, we have this complex coming online, and the traffic is only going to get worse. And there's already a lot of documented accidents, and I'm not even talking about with the train, I'm talking about just car accidents. Having a traffic light on a parkway is not exactly the best scenario. So we're pushing for a bridge, we obviously need federal money for that, and we're going to continue to push for it. So that's pretty much the things I wanted to talk about. Okay? All right, thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay, you can see the next three meeting dates, Tuesday, October 2nd, we're going to be at the airport, it should be interesting. Wednesday, November 7th, that's the day after Election Day, I'm sure there will be a lot of interesting things. And then Tuesday, December 4th, the last meeting of the year. Let's have the minutes for adoption, are there any corrections or changes that people would like to make to the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Can I have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
We need another second.
Oh, we need a...
Jimenez, one second. Just for everybody's information, Ted is taking the minutes today, because Kay is on vacation, so we're just going to need to let him know who's doing motions, because some of the new members, he hasn't, he hasn't met yet, that's all.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the minutes are passed. In terms of, I don't have any particular remarks, Commissioner?
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our different kind of format, we just figured we would try this for a change. We, there is a training coming up, WOMP is going to be hosting a tour of the Untermeier Gardens on Monday, September 17th, if anybody's interested in attending, there's no cost to do it. If you remember from the WOMP Awards Dinner, the Untermeier Gardens in Yonkers won an award for their restarting the refurbishment and the re-improvement of those gardens. So it's going to be started 5:30, but you do need to RSVP ahead of time, so they have a sense of how many people are coming. It does count toward training hours, so just a reminder for those of you who haven't gotten all four of your hours in yet this year, that you do need four hours before the end of the year, so this would count as two of those hours if you need that. If you need me to send the notice out again, just let me know, and I'll gladly send that out to you. Monday, September 17th. 5:30. All right, so if you can get there, again, it's going to be a lovely tour and just, you know, be able to see one of our WOMP awards, actually, you know, see how it came to be, so.
And we notify you if we're...
There's an, there's an email flyer that came out, and so you actually just RSVP right in there, okay? And then at the end, usually at the end of it, they'll give you a certificate that you just email back to either Bill or I afterwards, and then we'll get your, make sure your hours are credited. And then the other announcement I have for everybody is that's on September 24th, we are finally getting some new staff on board, and I do want to acknowledge that Bill Brady is going to be promoted to Chief Planner. Yes, way long overdue deserved. And Ted Linebeck is actually being promoted from Planner to Associate Planner. He's actually taking Bill's vacant loan there, so. Yeah, so we have a new planner, Michael Vernon, who was an intern with us probably like six or seven years ago, yeah, quite a while ago. He's been a planner, since then, he's been a planner with the Village of Porchester, and most recently Assistant Planner in Eastchester. So he'll be starting on September 24th. And we have a woman, Millie McGraw, who's starting with us, who is going to be taking over the east of Hudson, and she's going to be starting up a septic repair program in the watershed communities. So, you know, it's something that different communities have offered, but we're actually looking to establish some guidelines to go across the board for all the residents of the watershed, so that there's some equity for the more affordable units and for people with limited incomes to be able to give them more reimbursement, as opposed to just straight 50% or whatever the others do. So that's, those are my remarks, that's pretty much it.
Okay, well, you're staffing up, that's going to be helpful, I'm sure. Okay, next on the agenda is the, are the referrals, the letters that were dated July 16th through August 15th, the package was sent out to you. Does anyone have any comments, or anyone need to recuse from any of those?
There's a matter of nominating out of those referrals that I need to use my cellphone.
Okay, anyone else? Can I have a motion to approve the referrals, the letters dated July 16th through August 15th, 2018?
Motion for Jim.
Jim, can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the referrals are approved. Okay, now, there are two referrals of interest. We added one, I think after you got your package. The first one is the Avalon Osning Shuttle discontinuation, Lucas will give us a presentation.
So this is actually a letter that has not gone out yet, it's a draft that should be in your day of meeting packet. This is kind of going along the line of, you know, in a situation where we might say something a little negative, if we have time to bring it to the board, we will. And this is kind of one of those situations. This is, the Avalon Osning development is something we reviewed a long time ago about, like, I believe it was in, well, it was about like, it was in 2012, it was when it was approved. So six years ago, it was approved, it was, has since been constructed. And as you can see here, it's, it's an interesting spot, because it's halfway in between the Osning train station and downtown Osning and the Croton-Harmon train station in Croton. Here is like an aerial of, and it's, another thing that's interesting about it is, as you can see from the aerial, is the old Croton Act with a trailway goes actually through the site. So this was a very interesting project when it was proposed, because we'd never seen anything like this, where, you know, the site is bisected by a state park, or a trailway in this case, and they wanted to build on both sides of it. So there was a lot of concern about that, but they managed to do an okay job. In this case, they, it was, it had been an office site, a vacant office site, and they wanted a rezoning to do 168 units of housing. And at that time, you know, well, they're asking for a density increase in a place that's not a downtown, and so they proposed a shuttle service to the Osning train station as mitigation for this density increase in between the two stations. So now that, in the, I guess, in the secret findings, when they approved the project, they had a little stipulation there that said that once the occupancy of the development reaches 75%, they can evaluate the shuttle service and determine whether they need to keep running it. And now it's, we're in that situation, and the applicant has asked to stop running it, saying that there are not enough people riding it to justify the expense of running it.
Did they give you any data?
No. Oh, no, they did, they did, yeah. They said that it was offhand, they said that people were using it, but the number was so low that they could figure out another way to get those folks to the station. And from talking to the village, there is an idea that maybe they could get something, a different benefit from them in lieu of letting them discontinue the shuttle. So that's why in the letter, we made it basically a matter for local determination, up to the village to decide. But in the letter, we wanted to kind of memorialize the situation, to kind of call attention to it, in the sense that this form of mitigation is offered a lot. Like, I just typed in a Windows search on, through all our referral letters, you know, shuttle, and like lots of letters pop up, where we're either asking for a shuttle, or a developer is saying, well, we'll put in a shuttle. Because, as you know, there's a lot of referrals that where an applicant is asking for a density increase in areas that are outside of downtowns, or, you know, and this isn't really consistent, putting this development out here wasn't fully consistent with County Planning Board policies in the sense that it wasn't in the downtown. Although it was in a spot that's served by a trailway, it's served by buses, so it's not like building it out in the middle of nowhere necessarily, but the whole idea of using a shuttle as mitigation, and now, you know, Avalon, which is this, this major development company, saying that, okay, these shuttles don't work, well, five years from now, I could totally see them coming in, in another far-flung location, asking for a density increase and saying, we'll give you a shuttle, and the letter kind of documents that you're telling us that they don't work. So we wanted to have a record to go back to if this happens again, which it surely will, a developer asking for a density increase and providing a shuttle as mitigation.
Did the data they provide convince you that it really wasn't being used?
Not necessarily. I mean, because also, this is a rental property, people come and go. So there could be a situation where currently it's not being used, but there could be demand in the future. And, you know, I don't know what the situation is in Osning in terms of parking. I know that the Croton Station has a number of metered spaces, where if you get there early enough, you can park. Osning, I'm not so sure what it's like, I mean, we all know that parking, train station parking lots in Westchester, you can sometimes wait up to 10, 12 years to get a parking space. So if you're just renting, and you're coming in for two years, and you're going to move somewhere else, and you want to use the train, you're shut out of parking in a lot of places. So I don't know how you would get to the train station if that's what you wanted to do, you could call a taxi. I'm sure that the bus that we operate is not fully timed with trains, you know, depending on where you're going. You could ride your bike down the bike path, the old Croton Act with a trailway, if you wanted to, I mean, that would be one way to get there, but if it's raining, you're not going to do that. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, that's a good, that's a good point, you know, we don't know who might be living here in five years.
What was the alternative that they proposed?
They aren't saying.
Is it a commitment to the residents, is it built into the lease that they're going to offer that?
No, I mean...
Again, if people live in there, and they knew part of the reason why they moved in was because of that, they could just, it's hard for me to believe they could just stop it without some kind of commitment.
I mean, they said that they would come up with something for those folks.
Yeah, there's a lot of different alternatives. So was it in-service now?
They didn't, they didn't really describe it. I mean, maybe they may just give them money for taxis, I mean, if, they're saying it's like five or six people, so. Yeah, or something like that. And then no new people would, the new people who move in wouldn't know that it ever existed.
At the time that they made an application and it was approved, was part of, and just refresh my memory, because this may have been before I joined the board, but was part of it affordable housing units under the settlement as part of?
No.
No, no, no.
I just, I don't know the timeframe.
No, that's fine, Osning is not, is a very diverse community, so it wouldn't have been included.
But they got a density bonus.
They did get a density bonus.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, this is, well, they got a rezoning, I mean, this wasn't, residential was not allowed here, and they came in and wanted to apply a zoning district. I think in this case, they were using an existing zoning district instead of just writing a brand-new one just for them. So I think in this case, they just applied a new zoning, like a, an existing zone to that site, but yeah, I mean, this was not a residential area.
Is it fully occupied, do you know?
Well, I mean, it's at least 75%, that allows them to. Yeah, they've reached a threshold where they can have this conversation, so it's at least 75% full.
Okay, should we, should we vote on this at this point?
Or if you have any comments, make...
Any other questions?
Yeah, is it possible to say that we want to postpone this until we find out what their alternative is?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Also, it's possible to ask for more data back on what's happening.
We can't postpone the letter, but we can include in the letter a request for information, more information.
With this issue here in Newcastle, with this particular complex, we require the developer to have a shuttle. When you guys came in, you might have noticed a school bus out there, and that's actually the shuttle. But here's the thought, it's not a good thing. I mean, first of all, you know, it's, right now, it's only servicing this particular complex, which is, you know, like 68 units, like 40, 63, and it's, you know, obviously, the retail's still in the construction, the townhomes aren't built yet. And we actually have an electric shuttle, the town recently purchased, we got some grants, and it's a 100% electric shuttle, and we're actually teaming up with the developer, saying we're going to use our shuttle and leave the school bus, because nobody wants to get on the school bus, that dimension, that whole thing's a lifetime, it's not open yet. But one of the things I was curious about this particular thing is if they allow regular residents to use it along the route, because ours, it's not just going to be for the residents here, it's going to be along the route. Yeah, and people could jump on it, and kids could jump on it, and we're trying, our goal with our shuttle is to get more people downtown, and that's the goal, is to get more people downtown without driving their cars. And usage is an issue, but, you know, we haven't really started yet, but, you know, getting people, certainly getting, using the school bus doesn't help. We're hoping the electric shuttle, we tried to give a little bit of an image, we call it the ride, the electric ride, but it says it on the side, we're hoping that people will find it. It's more of a buzz, right, to give people more exact illusion, right? And, you know, I know that, what is it, Porchester, they came and they have a now trolley, which is cool, I mean, you've got to give, in my opinion, a little bit of something cool about it, you know, different.
Also, High Point in Greenberg originally, 30 years ago, when it was built, had a shuttle, and the originally was for people going to the station to take the train to New York City. As that group aged out, the developer said, well, we don't need the shuttle anymore, and the people said, no, 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 you know, we want to go down to New York City to see a play or something, or whether we like the fact that there's a shuttle that can take us to the station, and so apparently, it was kept. So I think maybe you could add a few comments, asking for some more information, and saying that, you know, it still could be valuable unless they show an alternative that can meet the need.
I don't know when the development opened, I know it was approved in 2012, so it's been operating for a couple of years.
Yeah, I can't, just in general, I mean, I can't imagine the operating cost of a shuttle was that tremendous to make it, I, you know, I don't foresee the benefit or the proposal costs.
Does the shuttle just run in the morning and in the evening? Do you know?
I mean...
I think that's a good point, about a lot of people go in maybe late morning to the city, I take the train into the city a lot, not during morning hours, but midday, and it's always packed for going to see...
Oh, I know, I know.
So I think that's a good point, that, you know, it's not just commuters, it's also people who are going in, you know, during the day.
Lucas, why don't you take a shot at grafting some of the comments that you've heard and sending it around?
Sure.
What does it do?
You know, I wasn't told. In this case, Osning Village has a new planner, and so a lot of these, they've gone like six months with no planner. So some of these are kind of backed up, we got like a whole bunch at once. So we should try to get it to them soon, but I would say like another day or two isn't going to, really.
Okay, so why don't you sort of redraft?
Okay, so would you, would you like me to, I mean, currently, the letter says that this is a matter for local determination, would you like me to take that out? And just, just, we've, I can make it say we've reviewed this matter, and we offer the following comments, and then take out the...
It's always ultimately a matter of local determination.
That is, that is true.
So I don't think you have to pull that out.
I was just going to say that maybe there's a benefit to the county where if they have the local shuttle, the county can reduce their bus line and work with it, so it supplements the bus, and the goal is to make the shuttle more useful, it could be useful, it just may not be utilized the right way.
Yeah, I'd like to know what they do to try to increase traction, does it run on a regular schedule, or is it on an end service? Because I think these shuttles can be extremely useful to people living in especially regular countries.
Okay, why don't you send it around? And the second referral of interest is 60 South Broadway, this has come before this board many times. I ask that it be discussed again, because it's one of the major developments in downtown White Plains, they're asking for additional, additional apartments over the original approval. I mean, now downtown White Plains has proposals, I think, between two, upwards, over 2,000 units, New Rochelle has apartment proposals for over 2,000 units, Osning, Peekskill, Porchester, I mean, there are apartments being proposed everywhere, so.
Yes, and...
Why don't you just give us a brief...
This is one of the biggest.
Run down to the changes that they're proposing.
Fair enough, okay, so this is already an approved project for 60 South Broadway, you may be familiar with the site, it's a...
This is the hole in the ground?
Yeah. That's the site, okay, so it's, it's basically right at the intersection of South Broadway and East Post Road. It used to be the Pavilion Mall, and then now it's the Pavilion Mall no more, it's a hole in the ground. So it's right in downtown. The development was approved in February of 2016, at that time, it was 707 apartments above 93,840 square feet of retail, so it was a big, one of them was like a big-box format retail with smaller stores and two towers above it. The new proposal, just more or less responds to market conditions with less retail space, so the retail space has been reduced to 28,000 square feet, and it's much smaller format. I'm just looking at, at the plans, it looks like one of them would probably be a restaurant, like a larger restaurant, and then maybe one other retail store. So because the retail's been reduced, the apartment count has gone higher, up to 814. Because of the parking ratios, they're actually able to reduce the parking because of the less, the less amount of retail space, so they're able to lower the parking count to 957. And the other thing about this is it allows it to be constructed in two phases, which was part of the issue, I think, with the earlier proposal, where it had to be constructed in one phase. As per city ordinance, 6% of the apartments will be affordable. And here, unfortunately, we didn't get like, this isn't like an EIS, so these are all like site plans that I had to scan, so they don't, they may not come out all that great. But you basically see here, this is parking structure is in the back, and the two buildings will be in the front, with the retail spaces here, and it'll be like a, like a drive-in, like parking court here in the center, with the, the residential entrances would be here, with the retail facing the street, and then the parking is behind. And this drawing here just kind of shows how the, how the phase, the basic path of it first, and then the other half second.
Is there additional access to the parking other than through that circle there?
Oh, pretty much that's, yeah, oh, no, from behind, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can see, down here, this is where the Crown Plaza is, the old entrance down there also, up above Hale Avenue. So two entrances. Okay, so we already sent a letter on this. The letter, because we had sent a letter in 2016, this new letter didn't really say much different, it was just, a lot of it were just standard comments we would make with respect to large apartment buildings, and they were almost the same comments that we made in 2016. So we noted that it was consistent with County Planning Board policies, we pointed out the sewer mitigation that we would want them to do, recycling, bicycle parking, green building, technology, that type of thing. And that's, that's basically it.
The parking in the back, is that going to be, I'm sure it'll be at least 10 layers deep, or?
Yeah, it's, well, the good news is that it's, it's a sloped site, so they can kind of build down, like you won't see it from...
Is it going to be, like, an open structure in the back, or will it have lattice in the back of there, or will it be closed?
It's gonna, it's gonna be kind of, yeah, they'll cover it up with something decorative, but I mean, make no mistake, it'll look like parking, I mean, but it will face the hotel. So that will, Hale Avenue will kind of be like this canyon of parking, like it's kind of what it will look like ultimately. But at least that's the side street and not the main, the main side, which is Broadway Um, but it, at least that's the side street and not the main, the main side, which is Broadway. Broadway would be very pedestrian-oriented, um, uh, construction.
The original plan, I think, had a, a walkway all the way from the top, all the way down to Hale Avenue. I guess down to stages and open space, which they wanted to connect the Crown Plaza to the downtown, but I guess that's sort of has bit the dust.
That, that phased away.
Yeah, um, although you can still walk through the parking garage, which is what a lot of people in White Plains do for things.
Are they having a shuttle?
Uh, no. You know, I don't know, I'd have to read the, um, the EIS from way back when, uh, they may have discussed it, um, but honestly. You know, shuttles for these, I mean, when you can walk to the station in fifteen minutes, a lot of people will probably just opt for the walking.
Did they reuse the towers in your bid, or is it?
They're slightly taller. Um, they are taller, but they're thinner. So, yeah, they did ask for a height increase, but it, it wasn't, I think it was something like twenty feet, but then the, the profile of the tower's a thinner.
If you look at the picture, one of the, if you look at the very top, a lot of buildings have always had, you could see the elevator shaft and, and equipment on the roof of the buildings from the ground. And one thing that people in White Plains, I think the beautification commission said, no, we want the tops of all these buildings screened with a parapet so that you can't, you know, don't have these ugly elevator towers on top.
Well, what happens when you sit up in the hills?
Hmm?
You kind of look down.
Well, if you're in an airplane, you can see it.
And the candles in the sky, what we call it.
No, from the ground, you can't see the, uh, the elevator towers. I think that, that's been part of almost every building in the last twenty or so years in White Plains, which I think is a very good, good design.
Has anybody looked at the windmill issue here?
Um, it was probably discussed in the EIS. The, a lot of EISs in White Plains do discuss wind because it's so windy, um. Yeah.
It looks like, um, you could have windows popping out.
Okay, thank you, Lucas. Anything in the pipeline, is it still busy in the summer coming to an end?
Um, not this week, but, uh, yeah, it's always a surprise, every day when the mail comes in, you know, you don't know what you're gonna get, so we'll let you know.
I'm just trying to find out about this project, um, what, at what point is, uh, do they have approvals to go ahead?
Yes, it's already been approved. My understanding, just from reading the papers, was that they were having trouble with financing. And that is kind of, and, and that was probably because of the, the phased construction, it was.
Do they have a pilot on this?
A pilot? I, I'd have to look, look at the EIS. I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember anything being described in the EIS about a, like a payment in lieu of taxes or anything like that, but, um, I mean, the.
I'm sure with the retail also, they couldn't guarantee the retail, which is why they showed the box down.
Yeah.
They couldn't rent that all that space.
Yeah.
The professionals in there.
Especially for large format, I mean, because it was definitely like a big box store, like something the size of a Target or, and we just lost our Walmart, we just lost our Toys R Us, we just lost, you know. So now we have, we, now we have extra large format space. I mean, my guess from looking at the, the site plan is it'll be like a, like a large restaurant, would be my guess, just from seeing the plans, but, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Lucas. Um, there are no matters for planning board action today, uh, but our commissioner is going to give us an update on the housing settlement. I guess we all maybe thought that that had gone away, but, uh, not so fast. Not so fast.
I'm gonna focus on the settlement, but I'm also gonna just, especially for the new members, just do an overview of affordable housing in general, so that you have a better understanding why you take some actions that you do. Because I know some of you have probably wondered, why are you approving affordable housing? So we're gonna start with an overview of the fact that there is no single definition of what we call affordable housing. Different programs have different income limits, they have different guidelines, they have different reasons for what they do. So just understand, when people ask you what's a workforce housing versus, um, affordable housing, there's not necessarily any, any single definition. It's generally where households pay no more than thirty percent of their income toward their housing costs. That, in the general scheme of thing, this, this census and other program agencies believe that when you're paying more than thirty percent of your income towards your household costs, you're, you're being cost burdened. So again, different programs are going to have different area median income limits, AMIs as we call them. Generally speaking, for the county's programs, we look at eighty percent of median income, you can afford to own a home, a reduced price home, but you can generally afford, and you generally have better credit to be able to get the mortgage to do that. Under eighty percent, though, generally speaking, you're just looking for in, uh, rental properties. And I know you've seen this chart before with all the different, so let me just go through it once and for all, because I don't know, again, that you necessarily understand what you're seeing. So again, every year HUD comes out, HUD does all the, uh, analysis, and they come out with what they call the area median income limits for Westchester County. Westchester County is its own defined area according to HUD for housing purposes. Um, it was actually Joe Diaguardi back in nineteen eighty-five got us designated as our own housing area for, for costs and other things. Um, and so HUD sets the hundred percent of median income based on a family of four. Um, and so right now, that number is one hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred, it jumped pretty significantly this year. So we do watch to see how's the economy happening in Westchester, how are things improving, are jobs and, and costs of living going up? And generally speaking, when you see incomes going up, that gives you some sense of what's going on for the rest of the county from an economic basis. So from there, we do takeoffs because different programs use different income limits. There is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that was a foreclosure program that allowed us to go up to a hundred and twenty percent of income. CDBG lets us go to eighty percent, and own our ownership programs, and then generally speaking, you've got other programs that go at the, at the lower income limits. When you're talking about thirty percent of median income, that's generally senior housing or very, very restricted, um, affordable housing. So when we talk about the affordable housing, we don't just mean new construction. We actually, as, as the supervisor pointed out, this isn't a perfect example of adaptive reuse. We've done significant adaptive reuse and other rehabilitation. We've now taken a school up in Peekskill, we took a church, we're actually taking a, an old Quaker meeting house actually in Chappaqua and converting that into a two-unit condo right now as well with Habitat. Um, but, you know, so we're doing, it's new construction and redevelopment. You've seen the housing authorities right now are trying to redevelop their sites. Um, it's rehabilitation, the preservation of units, that we can, there are some developments that you've seen where the development might have been done thirty or forty years ago, and their tax credit compliance period, or their affordable compliance period is expiring. And so we work with those developers to preserve those units. Um, and then we also talk about eviction and foreclosure prevention. That's always been a big program for the county because we don't want to see more people become homeless. We're trying to prevent homelessness. If you can catch that family when they've gotten that eviction notice, and you can help that family stay in that unit, because, not for nothing, many of the times that families get eviction notices because of a change of job or some kind of medical circumstances. If you can help that family and catch them up on that one or two months of rent and keep them in their home, you're gonna prevent some major issues as it relates to having that family become homeless. But then we have to keep those units affordable. And so one of the things we worry about is our monitoring. We do have, uh, one staff person who one hundred percent of her time is spent on monitoring units, working with all of the existing developers, all the existing units. Because the last thing you want is a unit that's supposed to be affordable, a developer or landlord charging rent that's not. And then it comes and haunts the elected officials that, what do you mean, we're not actually creating the affordable units? But in monitoring, we also have to do inspections, and then part of it is when we do ownership units, we have to be able to tell those owners what their resale ability is, because they want to be able to sell and move on and do other things with their lives. Our hope is that for many of our, um, ownership units, that when the family's income stabilizes and the family gets a better job, and they do well, maybe it's ten years in after living in that unit, that they can have the ability to sell that affordable housing unit to another family that needs it, and they're going to go into the regular housing market.
That sale price will be limited.
The sale price is limited based on our deed restriction, yes. It is, again, for your information, it is generally, it is the house, the, the price that they bought that house for, the, or the unit for, plus the, um, the depreciated value of any major capital improvements that they did. Because we want to encourage them to upkeep their homes. So we want them to replace the roof at the end of its useful life, we want them to replace the furnace, we want them to do those major, and those investments and, and keep that unit looking as it should. Because remember, with the settlement, these units have to stay affordable for fifty years. That's a long time for some of these ownership units. But then they also get the Consumer Price Index or the CPI value of that based on two months from before they bought the unit, till the time that they're selling, because we recognize the date, we're giving them a price. It's probably gonna be at least two months till they actually can close on the sale of that unit. So we actually do give them the CPI value and increase based on, now, sometimes, you all know, CPI goes down, not very often, but it has happened, and certainly in the last fifteen years. Um, and interest rates also change, and so as interest rates goes up, the amount of income or the amount of a mortgage that the family can afford generally will go down because they're actually paying more toward interest. So, so anyway, the, the, let me go to the housing settlement, let me jump right, jump right in with that at this point. Um, we're not done, as much as we, you know, it's been awfully quiet of late, but back on August tenth, two thousand and nine, so nine years ago, um, the, the county settled with the Anti-Discrimination Center of Metro New York, and with the federal government, to, an agreement that provided that the county had to provide at least, ensure the development of at least seven hundred and fifty affordable units. There were, at the end of the day, there were thirty-one municipalities in Westchester that were eligible. They were eligible by three different categories, and this refers to the paragraph of the settlement agreement, so paragraph seven A, seven B, or seven C of the agreement determined which municipalities were going to be eligible. And it also dictated how many units had to be in those categories of units. So for seven A, where twenty-four of the thirty-one municipalities are, it was limited to the municipalities that at, from the two thousand census, had a African-American population of no greater than four percent, and a Hispanic population of no greater than seven percent. For the seven B communities, it, those numbers went up a little bit. It was then a African-American population of no greater than seven percent, and a Hispanic population of ten percent, and there were five municipalities in that category. And then the last two municipalities, Tarrytown and Pelham, were seven C municipalities, and those were the areas in the county where the African-American population was fourteen, was not greater than fourteen percent, and the Hispanic population was not greater than sixteen percent. Which, at the time of the two thousand census, was actually the African-American and Hispanic population of the overall county. So any municipality that had an African-American population of over fourteen percent or sixteen percent Hispanic was not defined as ineligible municipalities, because those are generally the municipalities that already had more diversity. So we talked earlier about Osning not being one of them, but certainly Peekskill, um, Mount Kisco, Yonkers, New Rochelle, White Plains. A lot of municipalities in Westchester didn't qualify. As we've said, there's only thirty-one eligible of the forty-five municipalities in the county. So within the agreement itself, there were also obligations that at least fifty percent of the units had to be rental, no more than fifty percent of the units could be ownership, no more than twenty-five percent of the units could be senior housing, no more than twenty-five percent of the units could be existing housing. So there was an expectation that we were allowed to use and buy some of the existing units out on the market. Uh, we actually had the ability to work with units that were even already affordable, as long as we reduced their affordability level. And there was one development up in Yorktown that we were actually able to work with the developer. The development was, been built in the seventies, and it was required to be affordable for, at eighty percent of AMI as a rental development. And we worked with that developer to bring the affordability level down of those units down to sixty percent. So we were able to actually count, I think right now we're counting thirty-five of the sixty units in that development, because he'd had existing tenants in that building, and so only upon the re-tenancy of the units could we make sure that the marketing had been done, and, and that the, um, units were now being occupied by affordable income families at the right income levels. There were benchmarks, many of you know, every year we would report on how we were doing with meeting our benchmarks. So there were benchmarks that we had to meet through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, to make sure that by December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, we had seven hundred and fifty units with financing in place and building permits. And some of those were a little tough to reach each year, but, but we did do it. And then there were other obligations that the county had to do. We had to undertake outreach and education campaigns, uh, we had to educate condo and co-op owners, uh, about, and their boards about discrimination, and about how to, um, create housing opportunities. We had to do an AI or an analysis of impediments that was acceptable to HUD, that was done and approved, um, July of two thousand and seventeen, so we do have that in place. And then we had to create a central intake system for people who were interested in home, homeownership units. After, we had this in place essentially by the September thirtieth, two thousand and ten, and it was so successful that HUD actually asked us to expand it to include rental opportunities as, as well. Right now, we have over fourteen thousand families who have signed up and registered for Homeseeker from thirty-three states across the country. So not just Westchester residents telling us who is interested, but these are people who are now all over the country telling us that they want to move back to Westchester County. And we actually look at that analysis every, every quarter to be able to see, what is it telling us? Because I think I've reported to you in the past, that after Westchester County and, and New York State for who, the most popular areas, it's actually New Jersey, Connecticut, but then Florida, Georgia, and Pennsylvania, which are all very high retirement community states. Which tells us that there are senior citizens potentially looking to come back to Westchester. So the data that we've collected over the years has, has informed us in terms of where units should be and other things as well. So nine years later, we have six hundred and eighty units completed. We're almost there, seventy-five more to go, or seventy more to go, but we actually have ninety-three units under construction right now. They have their building permits and they are under construction. So, uh, we did have a conference call with the monitor a couple of weeks ago, and, and ensured him that we had not just the six eighty completed units, but we have more than enough units already under construction right now to be able to meet that seven hundred and fifty unit requirement. So in, although we're watching right now nine hundred and twenty-one units on one hundred and fifteen sites in twenty-eight of the municipalities, there were three municipalities that no matter how hard we tried, we just could not get a site within those, within those municipalities. And there really was nothing in the agreement, by the way, that would not have allowed us to put all of the units in one municipality. It was just encouraging us to spread them out, but there really was nothing that would have, you know, there was nothing that tells us, X, X, you know, whatever municipality had to have X number of units, so.
So nothing in the.
So there's nothing in Mamaroneck.
That indicates that minorities have to be in any of these units.
That's right. At the end of the day, we can't violate fair housing, um, rules to be able to determine who's actually going into those units. But part of the marketing that we have to do is a broader nine-county marketing area. And by the way, all those fourteen thousand families that are signed up on Homeseeker, they get an email every time a new unit is now being marketed, so that if they're interested, they'll know where to get the application and how to put their application in for that specific unit. So there are five measures in place for completion for us to measure, that's six hundred and eighty units. Number one, you've seen before, the units with financing in place, right now we have eight hundred and seventy-four. Um, we have seven hundred and ninety-three units with building permits, but we have seven hundred and sixty-four units with filed deed restrictions. Because when we work with the developer, when we buy that land, you know, the land, New Homes Land Acquisition Program that your board sees and you approve those funds, when we actually buy the land and sell it to the developer for a dollar, we file that deed restriction in the fifteen minutes that we own that land. So we've got deed restrictions filed on properties that are still under construction. So again, with the meeting, the seven fifty, we're, we're obligated that we have land with obligations on it for seven hundred and sixty-four units. Uh, we've done the affirmative fair housing marketing on six hundred and ninety-nine units, there's gonna be more units that are, get added to Homeseeker and have their marketing begun every day. Uh, and then we have, again, like I said, six hundred and eighty units with occupancy. So, um, we're well on our way, but we're not quite there yet, so, but the units are all different ti, types, sizes, and places. They're all the way from Yorktown and North Salem to, um, you know, Pelham, East Chester. Uh, the only, as I started saying before, the only municipalities we do not have units in are Tuckahoe, Bronxville, and Mamaroneck Town. And again, we worked with each of those municipalities, the mayor of Bronxville brought us on a couple tours of properties that were available, we just could not make those numbers worth, the properties were so expensive. And I think I've reported to you before, there was a two-family house in Tuckahoe that we looked at, that we would have literally had to sold that property, given it away, because the taxes on that property were so high, that it just, that the family's entire thirty percent of their income would have gone just toward paying the taxes. Um, so it's the nine hundred and twenty-one units are part of our larger pool. Only sixty-nine of our, remember those one hundred and fifteen properties, only sixty-nine of the properties are all standalone, all affordable, okay? Um, all of the other units are totally mixed in with other developments, larger developments. We might have one condo in an entire complex, or maybe two condos, and it's. It's, as the supervisor mentioned earlier, in this building itself, of the 64 units, I think?
64.
Yeah, of the 64 units, 28 of them meet the county's affordable requirements. So again, it's a, it's a mixed development, and that's what many of ours are. We do have 36 single-family homes, as large, by the way, as a five-bedroom home. We have over 60 units that are four bedrooms. And 14 of the units are two- and three-family homes, where we're actually setting people up now not just to be an owner of a single, of an affordable home, but they're now landlords of rental units, too. And so we're making sure the appropriate counseling is in place for those families as well. 19 of our units are condos, are actually condos within other developments, but, and only 12 of the developments are complexes with 25 or more units. I thought that would be of interest, because many of our tax credit deals, you know, the developers like to see 50 or more units, or they like to see larger developments. There's actually not, not many of those units are in those really large complexes, because again, we're not in Yonkers and Mount Vernon and the urban cities to be able to do those larger developments. We're dealing with developments in areas that frankly still have septic systems, where we've actually had to build a couple wastewater treatment plants to be able to help with the sewage capacity of some of these developments.
Rental apartments, are those rental apartments have to be affordable, too?
When, for the two-family and three-family homes? Yes, the, the units are also. And so the counseling agency that they worked with to help them buy the unit also helps them with selecting the tenants and stays with them. So if there's any issues with the families, the tenants, or anything like that, they'll help them work through those, any of those landlord issues, okay? 596 units as of June 30th were completed and occupied. I have to tell you, we're doing right now closings on a whole bunch of units. I think there were three last week, there's a couple of them this week. So there's, this unit has gone up, but the, the agency that reports to us only gives us the data on a quarterly basis. So of the 596 that are completed, 167 are homeowners, 429 are rental. 412 of the 596 units are occupied by families who, at the time that they applied, already lived in Westchester County. One of the things that we noticed, and I'm gonna introduce Bill Walter in a minute, because he's joining us to give you your tour in a little bit, but one of the, we, we did do some really intensive review of all the applications and the occupants who moved into a couple of the Darby Developments. And one of the things we noticed when we were doing the Round Top Development years ago up in the town of Cortlandt, was that many of the people who actually applied, most of them, three-quarters of the people who actually applied, were actually residents very, very close by. And so it's not like, you know, people from, you know, Kentucky are really looking to move to Westchester. There is definitely an interest in some cases, but in most cases, most of the applicants are already close by. 93 of the households were from New York City, 33 from Putnam County, again, those are all included in our marketing area. Of the heads of household, I'm giving you this data, I'm gonna, don't worry about, you know, what it all means. 55% of the households are white, 24% were African-American. These are the heads of household of the 596 units. 2% are Asian, 5% identify themselves as multiracial. 9% didn't even tell us, and they don't have to tell us what their race or ethnicity is. But you'll see that some of those, like for the next one, 25% are Hispanic, 59% are non-Hispanic, and 16% don't, don't tell us. So many people actually don't even tell us what their race or ethnicity is. Of the homeowners, though, this is the overall, is the 55% are white. Of the, I also looked at the homeowners versus the renters, just to see the difference. So of the homeowners, 44% were white, 26% African-American, and 37% Hispanic. So while 25% of, over all of our units are, went to Hispanic heads of household, 37% of the ownership units went to Hispanic heads of household. In terms of the renters, are, 59% of the renters are white, 25% African-American, and 20% Hispanic. So again, just some interesting statistics, because we do certainly pay attention to that. So right now, those properties, those 596 that have been occupied and the 680 that have been marketed, there are actually 699 that have been marketed, through June 30th, we had received a total of 14,373 applications for people wanting to move into those units. There's, in many cases, there's hundreds of applications for one development. So 10,630 of the applications were for rental apartments and 3,743 for the ownership. Of the heads of households for who's applying, 37% identify themselves as white, 32% as African-American, and 3% Asian, 8% multiracial, 16% over all of the applicants don't tell us. And then the 29% Hispanic, 53% non-Hispanic, and again, for the ethnicity, 18% don't tell us, but.
My question, of those 14,000 applicants, do you know what the percentage is as to the majority, where they're putting their applications, for, or should the question start? I know I keep asking this question.
For, oh, to where they're interested in?
Correct.
Where they want to be the units. Well, where the units are, the rental developments obviously get the most applications. You saw that, the 10,000 units. And so our rental developments are all over the place. There were over 800 rental applications that went in for the complex in North Salem. But Home Seeker tells us, because I know this is what you're trying to get, Home Seeker tells us where people want to live, and that's where overwhelmingly the greatest percentage of people, it's like 28% want to live in southern Westchester, which we define as Yonkers and Mount Vernon, yes. So I, I do know definitely that the interest is still in southern Westchester. But as it relates to the actual applications, Yonkers and Mount Vernon are not part of this applicant pool. So that's why, to get to your answer, I'm not, it's a little apples and orange. But we do look at every application, discussion, I should say, or at the report that comes in on a quarterly basis, for every development to see, to make sure our marketing efforts continue to result in a diverse applicant pool. And I'll, and I'll tell you that so far, to date, we've only seen one application that was not, one, one development that did not have a very diverse applicant pool. And that was for a senior housing development in the town of Somers, the Muse Two Development, northern Westchester, on Route 6. It literally, its northern border is Putnam County, yes. But, you know, we just don't think that there was, I don't know, it would seem to be a lot, many of the applicants were very, had, were told about the development when we looked at that one by their family members. So we do think it was senior citizens who either were looking to move closer to their adult children, or move back to Westchester to live closer to their adult children. But every marketing effort is reviewed, to be short. Now, the other thing you should be aware of, before the settlement agreement, a good applicant pool was considered five applications for every one unit you had available. Now, a good applicant pool is probably between 11 and 15 applications per unit. Because, just because we're getting more applications doesn't mean that they're good applications. You still need certain credit scores. Developers are allowed to hold, you know, people to their general business practices, so we do have to make sure that the tenants that are going in have an expectation they're going to pay their rent. All right, so the other settlement obligations, there are, or at least, or said, the analysis of impediments was approved by HUD July of last year. We did do our one, one community campaign on the benefits of diversity in, in all of Westchester. Excuse me, we had to spend at least $51.6 million on housing. We have now spent $60 million, $55,599. I couldn't get us that one last dollar there. But that $60 million has leveraged another $202 million, including $75 million in tax credits and over $40 million in HUD's funding itself. And then we had to spend at least $400,000 on outreach and education. We've spent 1.3 million. So we've definitely been keeping up with all of the obligations. Again, the entire agreement is 30-some odd pages, so there are certainly a lot of other things in there than just building the 750 units. But now we have a new county executive who is very much in favor of promoting affordable housing opportunities, so he's already asked, he recognizes that we've had affordable housing in place before. He's asked that we now keep track of all the affordable units that have had approvals in place since January 1st. So we are actively working, as you know, you've seen several of them already. I think I'm gonna have one more to you next month. We're working with that developer right now. So, but since the beginning of the year, we've got funding in place now for 202 new units, already recommended by the county planning board. 56 units are through the board legislators. A whole slew of developments are getting to the, going to the county planning board on September 17th, so hopefully in early October, we'll get many of them done. We are working with multiple housing authorities on redevelopments of their properties. We've just applied for a $3.5 million Lead Safe Westchester grant to re-implement our rehab program for lead-based paint. We've now reestablished the Westchester Urban County Consortium to get home money back in and to get the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is our eviction prevention program. And then the Housing Needs Assessment, we finally have selected a team to do this, the, a consultant to do the work, and their contract's gonna be, they're gonna actually start on the Housing Needs Assessment on October 1st. So there's definitely a lot going on. We're gonna, you know, keep things up and, and move right along. So we are, other priorities right now, we're re-establishing our property improvement program. I mentioned earlier about Millie coming on board to do a septic repair program, that's gonna be a big piece of this. We're going to be doing the CDBG rehab as soon as we can get CDBG money back, and then the Lead Safe Westchester, all for as a part of our rehab. Where, we've already got Legal Services of the Hudson Valley doing an eviction prevention program, but as soon as we can get some ESG money, we'll be able to enhance that a little bit more. And then, again, as I mentioned earlier, monitoring continues, because monitor is, is just so important. We've actually had to go and sue a couple property owners who sold their houses because they didn't tell us. And so it's been interesting that what we learned over the years, and it's actually helped us to sharpen our deed restrictions that we've, we consider the deed restriction to kind of be a living document. We actually have made amendments to them as we've learned things, as, as people have learned the system to get around things. But we really, in the scheme of things, in terms of foreclosures, we've lost fewer than 5% of our units for foreclosure, which nationally, if you look at any bank, their, their percentage is a much higher than, level than that, so. And that's it, I'm done. So, questions? If not, thank you. But however, I'm gonna introduce Bill Walter, who is, and Jim Wendling, one of his staff, who are here from Wilder Walter Partners. They are the developers of the Chapakoa Crossing Development. And so as soon as our census presentation is done, then we're, Bill's gonna actually take us on a tour. Our tour today is only gonna be of a couple units in this building. We're actually not gonna be, because of all the construction going out on the site, we, Sabrina can take you on a real quick overview of what's actually happening onsite at Chapakoa Crossing, but we're actually gonna stay in this building to just do a tour. I think of two units, I think you said, right?
Yeah, two or three.
Yeah, okay, so just two. One's a market rate unit and one is an affordable unit?
Sure do.
Are we doing?
Two affordable, one more course.
Okay, all right, all right.
Five market rate, probably, but that's what we have set up.
That's fine, no problem. So you'll actually be able to see some of the occupied, there's one woman here who's just thrilled to have everybody come and see her unit, she's so proud of living here, so. All right, so as soon as Ted's done with his presentation, then we'll join Bill for a tour.
All right, so we're about a year and a half away from the 2020 census. April 1st, 2020 will be census day, so we're trying to count every single person in Westchester County, where they are on that day, and get an accurate count of as much of the population as possible. So why is this so important? First of all, the US Constitution actually mandates that we do a census every 10 years, and one of the reasons it's mandated is for the purpose of redistricting. That's when we go and take the results of the, the decennial census and redistrict, and this is for both the federal government, state, county, local, and we create our, our new districts of roughly equal populations, so we have to see how population trends have changed. The census is also very important for equitable distribution of money from the federal government, state government, again, county, local. There are about $400 billion in federal funds that are based on population, and those, you know, span a wide variety of different federal agencies, you know, including HUD for housing, but also education, healthcare, infrastructure. And then we also then use census data to guide both public and private sector decision-making. So for instance, when you're going for funding through a grant program, for instance, you'll often want to see certain benchmarks as far as population data coming from the census. And then lastly, the, the census is sort of the basis of a lot of other data sets, other survey data out there. Really, the census, the decennial census is the only 100% count of the population we have. So when you're talking about, we'll, in a minute, talk about the American Community Survey, which is a source for a lot more different types of data, that base of the actual population is from the decennial census. Again, a lot of data that comes from, from HUD. HUD then uses census data to spit out their own figures. So what's new for the 2020 census? The, the big one is that this is the first census where you will have an option to respond online. And you will still be able to use your phone, you'll still be able to use the mail, so, you know, those options are still there, but the Census Bureau actually hopes that most people will respond online this time. If you look at this, this photo, this is back in 19.
Excuse me, do you have to request a mail?
Everyone, no, everyone will get a mailing. It will include a web address that you'll be able to, you know, go to on, on either your computer or your smartphone, and the hope is that a lot of people will do it on their smartphone, because these days, actually, some people have a smartphone but may not have a computer at home or the internet at home, or they may do it on their tablet. So the idea is that you can do it on any internet-connected device.
But we did it, and I didn't see an option for the mail. I mean, it was just fine for me to do it on the internet, but I didn't even see that as an option.
Was that for the ACS, probably?
I, I'm not sure, because I got something in the mail, and then I got something that sent me, sent me a password.
Yep. Yeah, so, so that was probably the American Community Survey, which they've already started doing online, yeah. So this'll, this'll be the first decennial census that they have an online option, but that's, that's great that you responded. Because not everybody responds to the ACS without a lot of prompting, so that's great. But we'll talk about ACS data, but no, that, that's great. But yeah, so an actual enumerator going out door-to-door and, and, you know, actually writing all the figures in themselves is sort of the way traditionally they did the census, and this goes back to 1940, for instance, where they would actually need to visit every housing unit. The hope is today that they will be able to spend less money on this, because this is the difficult, expensive part. You want people to respond in different ways before you ever have to send the enumerators out. But the Census Bureau is also going to attempt to try to make greater use of information they already have. And one of them is, is, you know, it's kind of intuitive, if you can't get anybody at the door, can you at least get some information from neighbors, from, you know, maybe the super in an apartment building? Hey, do people live in this unit? Is it vacant? Do you know anything about that? And then also using existing government records. So there are a variety of different federal agencies. If you think about it, you know, you file your taxes, you sign up for different programs. The federal government should already know a lot about where people live. So the, the goal this time around is to make greater use of those existing resources that are out there to supplement all the actual door-to-door, door-knocking. So the decennial census in 2020, as it was in 2010 and in 2000 and before that, is a 100% count of the population, meaning that we're really trying to count every single person, and the number is based on that number of people we counted. It provides a fairly small number of different statistics about those people, though. We know about housing units and vacancy. How many housing units there are, are they occupied or vacant? We know about age, sex, and relationship, so, you know, is it, you know, a, a household with three kids and two parents, or one parent and grandparents? We know about race and Hispanic origin. We know about tenure, which means, do you own your home or rent it? And the one new addition is that we will have a citizenship question on the 2020 census. Now, I should say, the citizenship question has actually been in the American Community Survey the entire time, and prior to that, it was in the long form of the census, back when we had a long form of the census. The American Community Survey replaced the long form of the census. So it's new to the short form of the census, but this exact same question is also on the ACS.
Well, there is litigation on that.
Yeah, I mean, at this moment, the Census Bureau is planning to include it, but yeah, I mean, we don't know what could happen in the end. So then shifting over to the ACS, because these are two different products that work together, but, but are, are very different in some ways. The ACS is actually an ongoing survey. It's sent every single month to a sample of the population. So in the entire country, we have a little less than 300,000 addresses getting the ACS all the time. And because of that, data is released every year from the ACS. But this is sample data, this is not 100% count of the population. So it's based on a 90% confidence interval, and it's subject to a margin of error. So we get the margin of error along with the statistic, and unfortunately, for very small geographies, we really have to use caution with these numbers. And that's one of the issues with comparing these two sets of data. You know, we have the 2020 census data, we're, you know, at least, as, as much as we can be confident that those numbers are, those. confident that those numbers are those numbers, whereas when we're looking at ACS data for small geographies, meaning looking at a small municipality like Buchanan, for instance, the data is okay, but they're not precise numbers. So that's what we always have to watch. And just an example of some of the kinds of things that are in the ACS, because it has a really wide variety of different topics. For instance, how many cars do you have in your household? How much money did you pay for electricity last month? Things like that. Also, the big key is that the ACS is the only source of income data. The decennial census asks nothing about your income. So whenever we're looking at any data on income and poverty, that's not the decennial census, that's the ACS. So talking about census geographies, the Census Bureau has some of their own unique geographies that they define. A census block is the smallest unit of geography. So we have decennial census data down to the census block. Block groups and tracts are groups of blocks and groups of block groups that are created out of those geographies. So if you imagine, a block is basically a city block. When you go to a block group, it's about one-thousand-five-hundred people, but it could be smaller, it could be larger. Same with a tract is about four-thousand people, it could be smaller or larger. Now, to look at what a census block is, if you're talking about a, you know, a traditional city grid pattern, everybody sort of understands intuitively what a city block is. So if you, you know, see over, in downtown Chapakua, kind of, you can see census blocks, very, very easy to understand that. One of the issues is when you're getting out into a more suburban or rural street pattern where you don't have city blocks. If you note right here, block four-thousand-and-six covers this large area, so if you wanted to say, hey, I wanna know, you know, I wanna be able to get some data for who lives on this street right here, Birch Lane. Unfortunately, we can't get data for Birch Lane, because it's a part of this large block that includes many other households. So just something about the limitations there. And then as we go out to block groups and then tracts, you can see, here's a tract map for the southern end of the county. So you can see, for instance, Tuckahoe only has one tract, so we can only talk about one tract in Tuckahoe. Yonkers has many tracts. Tract numbering is by county. Yonkers, for instance, you can see many tracts were split, so generally, we have a number, and then if a tract gets too populous and we want to split it in two different tracts, it would then get a decimal point after the tract number when you split them in half. So something we worked on this summer, a program in getting ready for the next census is called LUCA. It stands for Local Update of Census Addresses. So Matt Britton, who I believe came out to the planning board a couple months ago to introduce himself, was an intern that we had this summer, and we worked on basically reviewing and adding addresses for every single housing unit in Westchester, so that we can count all those housing units. So it's sort of the first step, is discovering where all those housing units are. So we worked primarily on the municipalities that didn't sign up for LUCA themselves. We encouraged as many people as we can to work on this, so many municipalities did sign up, some didn't get the chance, so we primarily worked on them. We also worked on some other municipalities that, you know, in discussions, didn't get enough time or, you know, had issues that they needed help on. So just to get a picture of exactly what LUCA involved, this is a sort of a way to visualize every address in the county, and then either modify or add new addresses. The sources that we used to review all the addresses included the DMV data that the state was able to provide us. We also used tax parcel data from the tax assessors. And lastly, we used, a big part of it was aerial photography and, believe it or not, Google Street View. And it's great to be able to use this new kind of data, because, again, in decades prior, you'd be driving around, walking around, and now we can do a lot more from our desk. So, you know, it's really great that we have all this technology.
In Portchester, the Westmore News, the local weekly paper, volunteered, they said they have every address in the village, and they volunteered to provide those addresses. I don't know if the village is taking them up on it, because otherwise, you have to pay money to get the...
Yeah, well, and, you know, the Census Bureau already, conceivably, already got a lot of data from different sources, including the U.S. Postal Service. That, you know, that's a great resource that the Census Bureau should have already included. So a lot of this is double-checking. It's not, I don't wanna give the impression that we're literally adding every new housing unit since 2010, it's more about double-checking.
The problem with the postal service is that zip codes go, be over different municipalities, two or three municipalities in one zip code, so you can't isolate the municipality.
Yeah, absolutely. There are all sorts of issues, and actually, that'll lead us into an issue that we faced when we were conducting this review. So when we were reviewing addresses, we realized that there were a huge number of addresses in the county where the location of the address was actually accurate, but the housing unit was being assigned to the wrong municipality. And the reason was that the Census Bureau's boundaries were wrong. So a whole other census program called the Boundary and Annexation Survey is actually done every year, and Matt also went through and submitted address changes. So here's an example. This is the very thin stretch of Amerenec Town between New Rochelle and Larchmont. And if you see the white boundary right here is the actual municipal boundary. So this is New Rochelle, this is Amerenec, this is Larchmont. The blue boundary is where the Census Bureau believes the boundary is. So you can see there are entire housing units that are assigned to the wrong municipality, and if these aren't corrected, this will result in inaccurate count. So Matt was actually, you know, worked very quickly to submit all these changes. The Census Bureau will be getting back to us next year to let us know, not only LUCA and BAS, what changes they accepted. So it's a process. And then the next big geographical program in getting ready for the 2020 census is called PSAP. It's the Participant Statistical Areas Review. So this is reviewing where block groups and tracts and census-designated places are located. So the Census Bureau defines where census blocks are, but as far as which blocks are organized together in block groups, and which block groups are organized together in tracts, that's what this concerns. So this is the schedule going forward. Unlike LUCA, municipalities cannot sign up to participate themselves in PSAP, so the county will be working on this, but we will coordinate with every municipality, getting stakeholders together. But this will be coming early next year. So, any questions?
Looks like there's a lot happening.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more to it than anybody else.
There's a lot of concerns from the immigrant community in regard to the census, so what is the county going to do to make sure everyone participates?
I can actually answer that. The county executive has actually set up a task force to be able to work on making sure everyone in the county is counted, so they're actually coming up with the members right now of this workforce, you know, this task force, to be able to make sure we've got all sectors of the county covered, to be able to make sure we really are doing enough outreach, so.
There'll be more or less knocking on doors, or the neighborhoods, or...
I think their tactic right now is to make sure that we are getting churches on board, we're getting the health centers on board, the people...
I heard you, we're here to...
Exactly. Where people already have a relationship and they trust some kind of provider or some kind of agency or something, we wanna make sure we can get these agencies on board to make sure people, that they can help people understand it's important that you get counted.
Many individual communities are setting up complete count committees. Portchester has just set one up, and the point is to try to do outreach to the community to explain the importance of the census, what the census will not do in terms of harming people, although with the citizenship question, that's gonna be a very tricky issue.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ted. Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Okay, then, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
One second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.